All right, it is four thirty or five thirty. We will get this agenda ready for the City of International Falls. If you guys could all join me in pledging allegiance to the law.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note all the members of our council are present. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I don't believe we had any additions or deletions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the minutes from August twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the payments and claims. We have going to the one oh one general fund coming from the eight twelve lodging tax fund, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. International Falls claims, one point or one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Airport commission claims, fifty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Major airport major capital projects, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. And Airport Runway Two project, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents, for a total of one million, nine hundred, three thousand, nine hundred, forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the payments and claims.
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Kaler. We have a second from Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question. Hearing none, let's call the question a second time.
Oh, aye. You said aye?
I did?
Aye.
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 Thought maybe you were going the other direction for a change of pace.
I'll vote yes. Passes five zero.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start that next. We'll start on this side. I don't want you to be caught off guard again.
This pressure's...
It's getting to you.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to audience. If anyone in the audience has anything to bring forward? Please, Lois.
That's what I was caught up in, wondering who's gonna come in.
Oh, that's... Okay, okay, for sure.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak with you. I have some good news tonight. If you have not heard, the sale of the Alexander Baker Building was finalized this past Thursday on the thirty-first. We were thrilled. It went relatively smoothly. It took a long time to get there. There were many steps to get there, but we were really happy to have all the papers signed and everything is done. Construction is starting, or it has started and it's underway. Things are going very, very well. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank the city for all your support in getting back as an AB to this point. I think things are gonna be really cool for the city. It's gonna be great to watch that building come to life. People are gonna have something to watch this winter. It's gonna be busy. So, thank you all for that. I have with me, and I'll bring them around to you. There will be a groundbreaking ceremony coming up on the thirteenth of September, and I just have an invitation and would appreciate seeing all of you there. The folks from Trellis and from Cootaska will all be present, and they're just gonna have a formal little groundbreaking and just a kickoff. So, if you could all come, I'd appreciate seeing you there.
What time is that?
One o'clock. It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for me?
Just given the situation of open meeting law, the chair would entertain a motion to allow the council to meet on September thirteenth for the grand or the groundbreaking at one P M.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. We have a second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion?
Just that there wasn't part of my board's report at the end of the...
End of the day?
End of the day.
She stole your thunder.
Yeah, cuz I was like, yes, I was already going, see, cuz I'm on...
Heat is just not your day.
Yeah, right? Tough day. Cuz I am, I'm on the Cootaska board, so it's, yep, one o'clock. Hope everybody can make it.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Walt? We're gonna start with you.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Would you like me to bring these roundish? I just... Sure.
Sure.
It's very seldom we get mail up here.
It's funny.
Thank you. Thank you.
Even had them all in order.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great news.
Got a question. So, what is the plan for Alexander Baker?
You would be welcome to talk to Lois. Lois, do you wanna give a quick rundown of that? I mean, it's been going on, please, so people can hear.
Sure. So, I'm gonna have my back to you a little bit, but the Alexander Baker Building will be converted into twenty-seven affordable housing apartments. There will be common areas on the ground floor that everyone will be able to access, but it will be apartment living. The front of the building will look somewhat different than it does today in that there will be green space and recreation areas out front of the building. You're welcome.
Thank you, Lois. All right, we'll go to opening of bids. We have approved the low quote for the Cary Park parking lot repair project. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that quote.
So, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do I hear a second over here?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution approving the low quote for the Fifth Avenue West paving project. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that low bid.
So...
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. This feels so weird.
Yeah, it does.
All right, next, we go into old business. We have a reading of the ordinance forty-eight of the fifth series, an ordinance for the City of International Falls granting a franchise agreement to Minnesota Power for the operation of a power company. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that second and finally.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Go second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the second and final reading of ordinance number forty-nine of the fifth series, ordinance prohibiting cannabis use within public property and public spaces. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So, move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler, cuz he was a little bit louder. Discussion? One really quick question that came up today at Land Houston Legislation. I think we figured it out amongst the two of us. This ordinance then will also include vaping with prohibited use?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we, that was one of the questions that we had. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to a funding request for immediate shelter needs. Ariana Daniels.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for having us here today. So, I sent a letter along with some letters of support for a funding request. I can briefly recap it. So, in for, since two thousand and ten, we've had a hotel program Servants of Shelter had until last fall. That's when we started to pare it down with our purchase of Northern Lights. It expanded greatly. This is for immediate shelter for people who were experiencing absolute need for shelter, often coming into contact with law enforcement, fleeing domestic violence, being released from different institutions such as the county jail and mental health stabilization services. So, what we had offered prior to COVID was one to three nights, and that was all funded with locally raised funds. During COVID, we expanded it greatly to do up to fourteen days, and we saw such a need, we had an average day of eight households a night for the first two and a half years until the funding that was COVID-related wound down. And that was one of the main factors that pushed us towards the creation of the Northern Lights supportive housing and shelter. So, we did expand. We now have seventeen households there, eleven are permanent supportive housing, and six are shelter, but we are still full with a waitlist of fourteen households as been our average. So, what we've seen the last, I say, now it's just a little bit over a year with our hotel needs is that we have managed to cut back on the hotel needs that we have, but we're still getting calls from, you know, law enforcement. We're not always able to meet that need because we no longer have an ongoing source of funding. And so, that includes people who after hours and entering the day that are in crisis that are in need of immediate shelter. That includes people who have mobility challenges because none of our shelter spaces are mobile, are mobility accessible, and we are working to permanently alleviate that need for supportive housing and shelter. And so, what we're looking for is some, some support from the city and from the county to help alleviate those immediate needs. And so, they would be limited to people who are coming into contact with emergency services. This is, you know, being displaced by a fire, being displaced by domestic violence, being displaced, you know, in nights and weekends. It goes to staff to cover some of our on-call staffing needs and also to cover some of the hotel costs. So, when we talk about people who are engaging with emergency services, they're often, when they are, and that is, and how homelessness is their primary need, it's not a great use of emergency services, and they don't have the resources in which to house them. These are people who are not, you know, needing, needing the healthcare or law enforcement involvement, but they're there because they don't have, they're being removed from a situation, they don't have anywhere to take them, which can get to be pretty dangerous certain times of the year. So, we're just asking you to consider the request. It's not a large request in the scope of what it costs to provide emergency services to people in need. And so, we would return to performing the duties that we had prior, which is being on-call twenty-four seven for law enforcement and emergency services to call us when there was a displacement by fire or an emergency that we could house the people, and then we provide food and other support services and then connect them with ongoing housing, just what we do.
Is the, is the request for ten thousand, two hundred from the city, or is it...
From the city, and we're asking for actually a little bit more from the county. We're asking for seventeen thousand, eight hundred for the county, and that will cover one year of providing emergency, the immediate need, so.
And when, when are you hoping to have the funds by?
Well, I know you are on a calendar year, and so, so we would be looking for it to start in the beginning of the year.
In January?
And I've sought out other funding to try and cover. There's just a lot. There was so much money spent on hotels during COVID that a lot of the funding sources are looking away from that. They're trying to, to help, help communities create more permanent spaces, which is what we've done with, so, just so, I don't know how familiar all the, all the councilors are, but we have three buildings Servants of Shelter. So, we have a five-unit apartment-based shelter that we've had since two thousand and seventeen. We purchased a four-unit apartment building for supportive services or permanent supportive housing, which is for people who are experiencing homelessness and living with a disability, and that's affordable housing that they are, receive ongoing community, ongoing case management services for. And we purchased that in May of two thousand and twenty. And then, in August of two thousand and twenty-two, we expanded yet again with the purchase of Northern Lights Hotel, and we have seventeen households there, six shelter, which is a thirty to ninety-day stay with case management, and eleven more affordable housing units. So, we are offering a lot of housing already, and we're still working with a waitlist of people in need of emergency shelter, and that's just the housing crisis that we're existing in right now. Projects like AB, projects like the mental health crisis beds at Northern Counseling's News Center, these all work to help alleviate some of the needs that we need, but we just aren't badly in need of more housing. Yeah.
On a...
When the interim comes, more emergency housing needs.
So, you, you've invited me, and I don't know what other councilors have been able to, to do it, to walk it through one of your facilities, and it's, it's a wonderful program. Can you speak to, like, cuz as right now, you're discussing the, the need, can you tell us about some of the success stories that you have through the process? Because I've seen people that now I see are working and doing wonderful things in our community. So, I, can you just touch on some of those success stories that you've...
Absolutely. So, out of the seventeen households that we have at Northern Lights, eleven of them are working within a mile and a half of our building, and that's really important for the local businesses that are close to us because being on that commercial corridor, there is a lot of employment needs for the businesses there. So, I think it's first really important to say that everyone that we work with, or the, I shouldn't say everyone we work with, about eighty-five to ninety percent of people we work with have an income. It's not an issue of people not having an income. It's an issue of income not meeting their need for affordable housing. And, and then there, you know, are other issues like serious mental illness, you know, substance use. But the main thing that we see is people's income not matching the housing that they have available to them. So, that is where, you know, from one end of the spectrum from being absolute emergency need, like what we're requesting, that's what those requests is limited to, to the ongoing need, which we see in supportive housing. But our shelter spaces are thirty to ninety days, and in that time, we help transition people from the immediate crisis of homelessness into permanent housing. And yet, we have a very high success rate of placing people in a permanent housing after. It's, it's the, the state, the shelter stays are staying longer because there's not as much housing stock available. Yeah. And the more people, the more times people experience homelessness, the harder it is for them to get into the housing that is available because homeowners and landlords have, you know, it really is an owner's market right now, landlord's market, not a renter's market. There's a huge demand for rental housing. So, anyone with high barriers kind of is at the bottom of the, of the list as far as being chosen for housing. That's...
Well, thank you. What about, now, I just wanna reiterate what Ariana said. These people that, they're, you know, cuz they get, you talk to some people, they think they're just sitting around, people, freeloaders per se, but these people aren't the people living in, they have jobs. Like she said, that the income just doesn't meet your daily needs, and that's why they're busy. The food access is busy, and there's just gonna be more of this, I think, sheltering. And I'd like, and piggyback on the chiefs and sheriffs' letters that they wrote to. It is a big assistance to law enforcement when a lot of people, that's all they need is a place to stay for the night. And I can, the list of stories, along with people that come to jail because they needed a place to stay, well, it's a lot cheaper to put them up for a night than put them in jail or what else might happen, and they shouldn't have to do that, so.
Well, I, I don't know if we're prepared as we're doing the budget right now. I mean, we just got our information for the budget right now. We have a, a meeting on Monday where we're gonna be discussing some stuff, so I... Chair would entertain a motion to move this to the Committee of the Hold and have the discussion with the rest of the budget process.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and we will have another listening session in November, so we'll put it that, that out. We really invite you to come and meet the people that we work with, and you'll be, I think you'll be surprised by how many of your neighbors and, you know, that you, and community members that you represent that are working on our programs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a mayoral proclamation proclaiming September tenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Gail Gagne Day. Before we do this, I have to give some background information of how this came about. For the folks that don't know, Gail Gagne, she is what is called a death doula? Dou, dou... Okay. Or a death midwife. It is very similar to what you would think it is. It is someone who works with the dying, not necessarily hospice, but works with the family. She's been doing this for many, many, many years here in our community, and a local family that she had been working with as their loved one passed away reached out to me and asked if there is a way that we could, we could honor her for her work in our community. There's not many of these in the, in the country. There's less than a hundred in the entire United States. Gail legitimately co-wrote the book on the subject matter, which is called Bold Spirit. I spoke with Gail about it, and I asked her if this is something that she would be willing to even accept, and initially, she, she said no. She said, "This isn't something that I do for any form of honor or respect. I do it for the families." However, one of the things is, is as, as she, as long as she's been doing this, there's more and more need in our community with, with people that are transitioning into death. And she is hoping that by getting this award, she could be able to have a conversation with other people to try to get them to assist people in working with families while they have a family member that's passing. On September tenth, there is going to be a get-together at the Salty Jester, which is when we would be presenting this to her, and she's going to be speaking about what she does and how to get people involved in helping families through the process of grieving and a dying loved one, which is a little bit different than hospice. So, I just wanted to give a little bit of a background of this one cuz this is, when it first came, I sent it to Betty. I said, "Is this even something we do?" And we haven't, but it's also something that's so interesting and so different in our community, and it only makes International Falls a better place. And Gail has been doing this for a very long amount of time and definitely worthy of the honor cuz it's not an easy thing to do. So, with that background, the chair would entertain a motion for the mayoral proclamation proclaiming September tenth as Gail Gagne Day.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, mayoral proclamation declaring National Rail Safety Week, September eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So, move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve an appointment of Margaret Horning to serve on the Library Board of Trustees. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve the hire for two parks and facilities maintenance workers. Public Works Barokah, would you like to come up and discuss the process? How we got to this point? The folks that you'd like to see us hire, and what are they gonna be doing?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We were very pleased with the amount of applicants that we got, a lot of qualified people. I think the, the last time, we had about twenty applicants for the last city job. This time, we had forty. We scheduled seven interviews. We had one person drop out. We interviewed six. The committee recommends hiring Calvin Turbin starting September eighteenth and Parker Savonin starting September nineteenth. And these two gentlemen will be taking care of all of our playgrounds, Cary Park, a lot of green spaces. They will be working the Zamboni and whatnot at Cary Park. We're gonna fire up the, we've got commercial refrigeration coming in on the twelfth to do training and startup of the ice plant. And then, we have R and R specialties coming in on the nineteenth, I believe, to do training with the new staff on how to put ice in, paint the lines, and whatnot. So, we're excited, as well as nervous, just because it's kind of a new... You know, it's a new facet to Public Works, and it's kind of something that we've wished for and to be able to take care of our own facility, and we're looking forward to, but we're a little nervous, so.
So, is Mike Wallace gonna be their direct supervisor?
Yes.
And then, how, how does that work for daily assignments and stuff? I'm just trying to understand it.
And it all depends on what time of the year it is.
Okay.
Cary Park, once, you know, October first, you know, they'll be reporting there and starting out their day there. But once Cary Park's closed and the ice is out, then they'll be reporting to the street garage at seven to three-thirty because their, their shift will change seasonally. So, they'll be rotating shifts afternoons and weekends every other week, kind of similar to the water plant, the way we have it structured there. And in the summertime, they'll be outside taking care of a lot of the green spaces and playgrounds that, that'll be their sole focus.
Does that free up summer work, staff?
We're actually gonna have summer staff working with them, which it's kind of our goal is, you know, Mike right now is out training kids how to, kids, summer staff, young adults, to run lawn mowers and weed whackers and whatnot, and that's what this crew will be responsible for. So, they'll be managing, basically, they're gonna answer to Mike when things aren't done adequately, whereas Mike right now is, is going out and taking care of that on his, on his own, which it's gonna free up a lot of time for him.
Any other questions? Is there part-time staff that we're gonna be looking at?
Yeah, and I'll probably be bringing that to the next council meeting. I'm gonna bring the job description and the advertisement to the Committee of the Hold and then hopefully get approval to advertise after your next council meeting if you so wish.
Okay. So, if there's no other questions, the chair would entertain a motion to hire Cal Turbin and Parker Savonin.
So, move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a acknowledgement and accept the letter of retirement from our finance officer and approve advertising to fill the vacant position. Just a reminder, if we don't accept his letter, he can't leave, so. Chair would entertain a motion to accept his letter of retirement.
Make that motion. Scott had a second, though.
Fair enough. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
He's been doing a good job, guys. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just gotta say that we've had, Brad's been really, really good. When I first got on city council, we were, we were kinda struggling, and then we ended up having a part-time position, and that worked for a little while, but it's, to have someone in the office that knows the budget that can, we can go to has been just absolutely fantastic, and I...
I like Brad.
I don't know why you guys wanna see him leave.
You're open vo... No.
Fair enough. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Couldn't do it. All right, we'll go to approve adoption of full-time scheduling model for the International Falls Police Department and approve, approve the opening and testing process for two full-time officers. Chair would entertain a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Wagner. Discussion? So just really quick, we, Betty and I had little difference of opinion on how to handle this one because we've been going through the budget process and it's becoming very clear that the model going into next year has to be having another two officers, just the way it, it works and it's going to make sense and for us to be able to continue. For the community, it, it's difficult to understand why this is a choice that we have to make. Part of it is we're struggling with the part-time model. It's worked out really, really well for a long time. However, as we're moving into this new world of people not going for part-time jobs in the police field, we, we need to hire some full-time to fill all of our shifts. And I know that our police chief can speak to it considerably better than I can, but the key to this whole thing is if we start the process now, we can get it into hiring the folks in January. If we waited until January to do this, it wouldn't be until March or April. So it's just a timing thing. Chief, do you want to give any background on how we've gotten to this? Because we, you've done a great job on this.
Thank you, everyone. I recapped it pretty well. This initially started with the county's decision, which is a smart one to move away from the part-time model. As you know, we share part-time officers between both agencies. If either one of us decided to go to a full-time model, they would take those part-time officers and the other agency would have no choice but to go to that as well. So I've been in constant contact with the sheriff. We've been developing this plan for, I'd say about a year and a half, just knowing that this is coming up, what are we going to do, how are we going to handle this? He's right where we're at with his board, the same discussions. It's, it's the nature of the times we're in, like, like you said, merits. We've been kind of going through this whole process and looking at everything and we mentioned the, the other day that my hesitancy and it's just twofold, any kind of budget request in this day and age, I, I understand why that's troublesome and, but on the other hand, it also signals that there's less police officers available and it's, it's just where we're at right now. I will say, you know what, the police department has historically gone through these cycles where they, they go away from part-time when, when the numbers are low and then through attrition, they might not fill up positions in the next few years because they have more applicants and they go back to the part-time model. It's not something we have to stay with. It's just, we have to be proactive in how we do this so we don't have any shift gaps or any coverage problems. Some good news, you know, I'm in talks with Hiving to try to coordinate with their law enforcement program to have ride-alongs up here. Some of the students get people interested in our area. But again, like I said, it's, it's just a product of the times.
And, and I think the, the last piece on this is if, the way that our budget model is, it doesn't, it doesn't change how much money we have going out because the part-time funds that we had just get shifted into the full-time. In the event that we weren't to do this, we would be spending more money in overtime to try to cover those shifts because we would be essentially losing two part-time officers and to try to find new ones is extremely difficult.
And I think it's a good point. I put in the estimates of what that would be in 2022, but as we said, this personal leave goes up every year contractually, so the cost of filling with overtime would just keep growing and growing. Far more consistent to hire the two entry-level patrol officers and in the long run, I think that's what I've tried to do is plan strategically for several years. It makes more sense to adopt this program.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Well, just because I've been struggling, I think probably, I, I believe in this needs to be done, but it is going to come at a cost. But I also thought many times running through, but you know, we're going to have money, you know, we're going to have to take more out of our general pen, but almost one of the offers, whole costs will be covered by what we pay for a part-timer right now, that budget. And they say overtime and, and this is just what I was talking about today. I hate to bring the ambulance into this, but I'm gonna. I was thinking, you know, why should I be worried about making services better for the people in my town? You know, I'm conscious of spending money, but here I am supplying ambulance service to people that don't pay a penny for it. So that was kind of a difference maker for me. And I do think this is the way to go. I don't think it's going to get any better with, for quite a few years, people getting into law enforcement, wanting to move here, like I said before, we all think it's great here, right? We, but not everybody does, you know, and a lot of them are married and not, both have to like it here and there's housing there, so. And to keep our force and we've got to have, and we don't want everybody filling it up with part-timers.
Right.
I mean, overtime for shifts because guys need that time off and eventually that, they get stressed out, they get tired, they're on the street and that's a bad thing's happened and it could add cost and more, so.
I appreciate that and the mental wellness is important to both of us.
Yes, very important because takes a bit, you know, like we talked before, it takes a bit out of you every day and you don't know it, no matter what you do, not necessarily law enforcement.
Anything else? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to reports of boards, committees, department heads, city administrator?
Thank you, mayor. I have nothing additional this evening.
City attorney?
I have nothing additional.
City department heads? Chief?
Yes, one thing, mayor and council. We did approve fixing our city one fire truck in the, I think it was mid-June, we approved that at a council meeting. The estimate came in at about between $15,000 and $16,000. I got a phone call last week while I was out, when they took the truck apart, they phoned me deeper problems. So we're going to have an additional $11,000 to expend on that truck. I did approve, I did talk to the city administrator and we did approve those fixes because we had to to get it back together, but I wanted to inform you that that bill is going to be more than anticipated.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, reports to the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions?
Well, part of mine's already been taken care of. Thanks, Lois. And Thursday from four to six, as part of the One Watershed, One Plan Committee that I'm on for the city, we're having a kickoff meeting out at Rainier Community Hall. There should be some stakeholders there from different agencies, DNR, stuff like that, and just let you know what it's all about and what we're looking at.
Excellent. Anything else? The meeting today that we had with the county went extremely well, had a great conversation. In fact, the conversation went so well that we're going to have another meeting next month, first Tuesday of the month at 10 o'clock at Bacchus, room 104. We had some great conversations on a handful of different things that the city and the county worked together on. We had great discussion about the ambulance, the airport, KETA, the law enforcement center. And we're going to continue that discussion and dialogue as we move forward because we are all in this together, so really, really good conversation. Tomorrow, myself and the city administrator are going to be meeting with the senate bonding committee that are going to be here in town, working on two different projects. One is going to be the Kerry Park project. The other one is going to be looking at the replacement of the international bridge. That has came very fast and furious. We don't have a ton of information on that. There has been a background conversation with myself and the county and the Department of Transportation a couple, couple of years ago legitimately, and within the last two weeks, it became a hot button issue. Very happy to be able to take them, along with the mayor of Fort Francis, to see the, the border tomorrow and see the challenges that we have with the current bridge. So that is tomorrow and that's all I have. So anybody from the audience have anything to bring forward? Hearing none?
Yes.
Please.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to come forward, state your name?
I have some questions. I called in the radio this day. Don handled Pete and Teddy doing the private capital improvement project on the speed improvements around the city. I asked her to invite Pete and Ted back and give private capital improvement on Kerry Park because there seems to be a lot of issues around the problem, what is going to happen at Kerry Park? And I see you cost a lot, like about a parking lot, um, these locations. I talked to maintenance workers over there about some branches that are rubbing on the building, ripping the metal rough off, and they said, well, we're not going to fix it because we're going to wait until we get in the building. So, you know, I just need, you know, some clarification on what's going to happen over there. I mean, I think that it's, it's over.
I guess, I guess I don't necessarily understand specifically, I mean.
Where's your plan?
To.
Is he here or where?
They're right here, they've been in the, they're right here, they've been in the newspaper.
What's it been, paper?
It's been on the radio, it's, I mean, the, the project is to rehabilitate, the project is to rehabilitate Kerry Park. It has not been updated since 1940s. We still have the original, the original playground equipment over there. The, the arena is in dire shape. We have, I mean, the, the whole project is to rehab that entire park for the residents of International Falls to try to get it so that everyone from youth to senior citizens can be able to utilize that, along with community, uh, community education and have a, a park that is revitalized and used for everybody. But no, we're not hiding anything.
And as far as the roof at Kerry Park, well, I'll call Mike tomorrow and I'm going to send somebody over to look at it and see if it needs to get fixed. I mean, if it needs to get fixed, we'll get it fixed, but we got to see what it is. We're not waiting for anything because, because for one, we're not getting it. We don't have a new building yet. That's why somebody asked me when I was at the radio after that, or maybe it was the time after, what are you doing at Kerry Park? And I told them, well, we're replacing the parking lot because we got FEMA money to replace the parking lot. And they said, but why are you doing that if you got a new building? Like I said, we don't have a new building. We don't have anything yet.
You've got FEMA money to replace the parking lot and tear the basketball court up and the tennis court up. Is that what you're telling me?
No, we didn't, no, no, no. We didn't get money to take out. We didn't put in, because the basketball court, we didn't put in money to get that replaced.
Why not? That's why it couldn't be resurfaced because you couldn't.
Why not? Because, because that would have been unethical because it was shot before the flood happened. That's why.
Now, I told that to him, he told that it damaged because of the flood sandbagging. So, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. And another one is that you're going to tear out a softball diamond. Is that true?
In the project that it would be taking it from two to one, yes.
And so now this new resolution plan for fixing the parking lot, what parking lot are you talking about?
The parking lot in front of Kerry Park over, where it's pavement over there.
And it's armed?
They said it's damaged and they gave us money to fix it.
It's damaged. It got damaged last year when we were sandbagging. The parking lot is in front of Kerry Park.
Yeah.
It's the arena parking lot. It's what's getting rehabbed. It's not getting replaced, it is getting rehabbed. And why? If you want to, it is, it is small. Does that involve the, the worship park connection?
All right, we're going to move.
We're not expanding it.
We're going to, we're not expanding it.
You're not tearing the basketball courts out.
We are tearing the basketball courts.
Oh, you are tearing, okay. So that's, that's a new parking lot.
No.
No.
We're just tearing them out.
You're tearing them out?
Yes.
And the tennis court?
Yes.
And they're not built in 1940, I can guarantee you that. They're a lot newer than that.
Understood.
All right. All right.
Anything else on your audience? Hearing none, we will, in your packet, you have correspondence from the International Falls, Coochin County Airport Commission, the draft minutes, the Rainy Lake Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan. As councillor Taylor had pointed out, that is going to be four o'clock at the Rainier Community, Community Building on September 7th. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, September 18th at 5:30.
I just like that, it's going to be very riveting Thursday.
I'm very excited.
If you like water and.
If you might.
Yes.